They've been doing it all. I killed. Four weeks. It's been, it's been three and I wasn't even hallucinating. It's been five for me.
The Columbus City Council meeting for February 5th, 2024 will now come to order in compliance with the Open Meeting Act. A current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Volkley.
Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Freshour.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Volkley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all of our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. We've got a house full of guests this evening. We even have some Boy Scouts here doing their duty. We welcome you all. If at any time during the meeting, anyone in our audience would like to address any item on our agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward to the podium, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the January 15th, 2024 city council meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the January 24th, 2024 Civil Service Commission meeting certifying Michael Clea as a police officer candidate. Item 4C, reappointment of Kevin Johnson and Corey Reader to the Business Improvement Board for three-year terms. Item 4D, resolution number R24-08, approving the agreements with the American Legion Hartman Post 84, Columbus Mariners Baseball League, Columbus Youth Baseball League, Columbus Youth Softball Association, and the Columbus Soccer Club Incorporated for use of city facilities. Item 4E, resolution number R24-09, approving the lease agreement with the Loop River Public Power District for use of an H beacon for the airport. And item 4F, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and councilors, is there anything you would like removed from consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public, uh, special presentations.
Item 6A, annual report from the library board.
Good evening. Timothy Mattis, I am the president of the Columbus Library Board. Twenty-one, twenty-one, thirty-third street, just in case. Um, we are here to present the annual reports of the Columbus Public Library. I believe that the members of the council all have copies of that, and so if you have questions, I will try to answer that. I would also recognize that our library director, Jerry Hopkins, and also one of our assistant directors, Brad Ruska, are present in the meeting room as well. First thing I just want to, as you guys are looking over the report, I just want to take a little moment to commend the staff and leadership team at the Columbus Public Library. As you are all aware, there have been a lot of changes in the past year, some of them long-term planned changes and good changes, some of them unexpected changes. But I am very proud of where our staff is at this point. Even with those changes, the planned and unplanned changes, the staff has always, in this last year, just kind of rolled with it, taken it in stride, and looked for ways to make things work smoothly. And so I think that is a, I think that really reflects well on our library and our employees. Our staff also in general is just, I, I've been to a lot of libraries in, in my, in my life. I'm, I grew up going to libraries a lot. I spent a lot of time in college in, in the UNL library and the UNL law library, and I've spent a lot of time in our library. But I would put our staff and our library up against any library I've ever been at, as far as, um, knowledgeability and, and our staff is just, is friendly, they're kind, knowledgeable, they're dedicated, and I think we have a really special kind of library going here. So, um, moving on, just some, some things that you'll see in the report and maybe some things that you won't see necessarily in the report but should be reflected by the numbers. Since July, we have had a nine percent increase in new patrons and long non-use renewals. So that means more people coming into the library. Obviously, with the changes in the physical plant, I can't go apples to apples with last year, but over the last three years, we've had a 37% increase in electronic materials from our library. We've had a 3% increase in physical materials from our library, and our budget has decreased by 29% over the last three years. Out of our 14 sister libraries, and we consider those libraries in cities that have between 10,000 and 65,000 people, the only two libraries out of those 14 sister libraries that spent less per capita on materials were Scotts Bluff and North Platt. For instance, Papillion, the library in Papillion spent $28,000 more per year than we have on materials, and Norfolk is spending $128,000 more than we are on materials. So I think that we're doing a very good job with the resources that we have providing services to the community. As far as staffing goes, we do have four service points in our library. By comparison, the Norfolk Library has two, but in order for them to staff or fully staff their facility, they are using 2.15 more full-time equivalent positions to do, to staff their library, and we have twice as many service points. So I think we're doing a very good job with that as well. Further comparison, Papillion is staffing their library with almost one and a half more full-time equivalent positions than we're able to use at our library. And Fremont, again, with only two service points, is the only one that's actually going with less. But they have two service points and they are staffing that library with two point, or about two and a half, uh, full-time equivalent less positions than we do. But again, they have two service points and we have four. So I think that shows that we're doing a lot with what we have and serving the community very well. We are also having still a lot of visitors out of town. Obviously, when the building first opened up in July, there was a grand influx of visitors to see our new facility, but I don't think that that's really slowing down too much. Usually, over the holidays, the library's pretty empty, pretty dead. But this year, it was actually pretty busy. We had a lot of grandparents bringing children in. They wanted to see and tour the library and spend time with their grandkids here. I think we really do have a facility that is attracting people to come in and use more than we did before. So, um, that's kind of where I am with my comments now. Is there any, any questions or anything?
Just one question. What do you attribute the, the cost difference between here and Norfolk as far as the budget? Are they doing something different than us?
I don't exactly know what they're spending their money on. Obviously, I can't see their budget. Okay. I don't know if they're just buying more things or if they're spending more money on things. I do know that we are looking at what we are expending very carefully and trying to make sure that we're getting materials that are going to be used instead of just putting stuff on the shelf that's never going to get checked out. I think there's, actually, on the first page, you can see that we added 3,077 items and then there's 470 items withdrawn. Well, those withdrawn items are largely things that haven't been checked out in a long time. And so we are making space, taking things out that people aren't interested in or not using, you know, to make room for things that they are. And so I think, I think a lot of that can be attributed to us knowing our audience, if you will, and getting things that the community is interested in.
Thank you.
Funding. Up in the upper part of the, uh, report, you're talking about City of Columbus capital funding of about nine and a half million dollars. Does that include the funding associated with the contribution from the Columbus Library Foundation?
Yes. That's the total spent on capital projects. It's not all City of Columbus money. There is all the money that went to the project. So that's just what was spent on capital this last fiscal year. Not all of it was taxpayer dollars. It's all in our budget, though.
Of the total cost of the library, how much of it was funded by city? How much of it was funded from, uh, contributions by the foundation and others?
The foundation raised eight million dollars.
Excuse me?
The foundation raised eight million dollars.
Eight million?
Eight million. That was their goal, and they met that goal.
And the city?
And the balance of the expenses for the, the library portion is covered by the half-cent sales tax that voters approved.
Which amount was?
The number off the top of my head, about, it's about 10 million.
So the library foundation contributed about eight million and the city, through the half percent sales tax, contributed about 10 million?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
No problem.
Much better said than I would have been able to tell you.
Any other questions for Tim? All we can tell you is tell, tell the staff to keep up the good work.
I do every day. Every day I see them. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. All right, we'll move on to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing, application of Harrah's Nebraska LLC doing business as Harrah's Columbus, Nebraska racing and casino for retail class I liquor license at 5944 Howard Boulevard.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Mary Vagelis. I'm an attorney at Bruni Law Group. Our offices are located at 1125 Hughes Street, Suite 501 in Lincoln, Nebraska. Here as local counsel on behalf of Harrah's Nebraska, behalf of Harrah's Nebraska LLC, excuse me. And I just wanted to be available to provide any questions. I believe you have our liquor license application, which outlines the scope of the license which we're seeking, which will lead for sale of on-premise consumption of alcohol. I also have Don Oster here with me, who currently serves as general manager of the Harrah's Nebraska LLC location at Ag Park, and will be transitioning over to the new property, and I'll let Don introduce himself.
Good evening. My throat's a little dry tonight. I, I moved to Columbus about 10 months ago, and I have to give everybody credit for, this town is very, a very nice town, very clean. We're excited to bring a new form of entertainment to Columbus, Flat County in Nebraska. The permanent casino itself is planned to open the first couple weeks of May, so we're really excited to, to be here and offer this. We'll have the first permanent casino opening in the state of Nebraska.
Awesome. Any questions for guests? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to make a recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the application of Harrah's Columbus, Nebraska racing and casino for a retail liquor class I liquor license.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 7A1, application of Harrah's Columbus, Nebraska racing and casino for Don Oster as manager in conjunction with the liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, I move application of Harrah's Columbus, Nebraska racing and casino for Don Oster as manager be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, public hearing, workforce housing tax increment financing incentive plan.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed?
I, I think maybe somebody should speak to this.
Do you want us to do that now?
Yeah.
Jean, do you want to or do you want me to? Okay, I will. Okay, so, um, a couple of years ago or within the last couple of years, the Nebraska Legislature expanded the use of tax increment financing to workforce housing, and that's specifically, the parameters of that use is specifically spelled out in state statute. So you can, historically, we've used the traditional tax increment financing for infrastructure related to development, and some of those developments have been housing projects. What this new bill is saying is that if there is, if there's other expenses that are associated with workforce housing projects, then that tax increment financing portion can also be used for the above-ground expenses. So historically, tax increment financing is really, think of it as below-ground infrastructure, land, demo, site prep. Now you can use it for above-ground so long as it's workforce housing.
So what it's done is it's expanded the ability to use.
TIF, just for workforce housing.
Toward workforce housing.
But it hasn't changed the way that we figure what TIF is available.
No, there's still the same amount of TIF available. It doesn't change evaluation or anything like that.
It just changes what it can be used on.
Correct.
So we.
We have a motion. Okay, did we get the motion and second to close?
I made the motion. I don't know whether I got a second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B1, resolution number R24-10, approving the workforce housing tax increment financing incentive plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R24-10 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R24-10. Any discussion?
Just a que, so we have nobody that's interested in it, but we have a plan.
This is, this is just the plan. Anybody that's interested in it would have to fill out an application just like any other project.
So this is just creating the plan and isn't?
And, and really, this just adds to our plan. It's, it's some more categories, right?
No, this is a totally new workforce housing incentive plan. It's required by state law in order to use tax increment financing on workforce housing. So it's just a, it's a requirement of state law to have a plan before we can actually approve any plan, uh, projects.
And this is our plan.
This is our plan.
And they have to come back to the council before.
Oh, yes. Yeah, there's multiple steps for every project. This is just saying we allow it.
This is government at its best, step by step by step. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item nine, reports of city offices. Item 9A, the police department annual report on the K-9 deployment.
Report from K-9?
Is anybody, do you want to speak to this?
Chuck Sheer, Police Chief, Columbus Police Department. What I sent to Tara to forward to all you folks was our annual report for our K-9 deployment for 2023. Officer Velasquez and Eros have been a pretty integral part of our police department in our operations. Last year, they deployed on a total of 57 incidents. Fifty-two calls were in-house and five calls were to assist other agencies. Three calls were not responded to because of non-existing MOUs with those requesting jurisdictions. We request those jurisdictions to have an MOU with us so that if we deploy, they take responsibility for the actions of the K-9 and any of the expenses incurred. Locally, they had 48 local calls, and 33 of those calls were drug detection and 15 were patrol call, were patrol call calls. And patrol call calls are trying to look for individuals or trying to apprehend individuals. Many of the apprehensions and the seizures that we had over the year would not have been possible without Eros's involvement. His detection on those were vital in us making those particular cases. There was actual breakdown of each particular call, the date, and if and when they were deployed. And out of those, I, I know that we're not going to stop all drug activities in the community, but Eros has been pretty significant in trying to detour those individuals that might be thinking about drug activities to do maybe elsewhere. We've also been very successful in trying to find people that have fled from scenes or trying to look for wanted people that have, that have left or fled on foot. He's been very successful in that as well. It's not in this report, but we had a recent situation with Polk County where they called for our assistance. There was a, a, a pursuit that took place, and the individual in the vehicle left the vehicle and departed on foot. They called the State Patrol K-9 and they called our K-9. We have an MOU with Polk County, so we went. The State Patrol K-9, they weren't able to find the suspect, and they gave up hope and quit their search. Sergeant Velasquez and Eros were very diligent. They continued their search, and they were able to apprehend the individual in a barn about a quarter mile away from, from where the other search had stopped. And so the sheriff in, in Polk, Polk County called over and gave kudos to that team for finding him. They were very happy with the success. And as a result of that, you know, they released the dog, but the dog didn't take the individual into custody. And so there was no problems with that individual. There was no injuries to him or the animal. And so we're very pleased with, with the results. And so we look forward to their continued work in the department, and hopefully we can either meet or beat this report for next year. Do any of you have any questions for me?
Chief, of the three that you did not respond to because there was no MOU in, in force, have those agencies stepped up and signed now?
No. The only one that did was Polk County. A year ago, they recalled us and we didn't respond because there was no MOU, and they had since signed the MOU, and we are now responding to their calls if they give us a call anytime. But Butler County and Colfax County were the other agencies, and they don't have an MOU with us at this time. And we've advised them that we're not going to respond until there's an MOU in place.
Understand. Thank you.
Chief, when we promoted Sergeant Vasquez to sergeant, we, there was discussion about him, or replacing him. And I know you're short-staffed. Are you in, anywhere close to replacing him or?
We've had a couple of individuals express interest, but those individuals don't live in the community, and it's against our policy. And so we have not pursued that until we get more suitable candidate that meets the criteria that's in the policy.
And that's worked out? He's been able to cover all his duties? Thank you.
What's the typical service life of a K-9?
Uh, anywhere from seven, 10 years. And right now, we're about seven years with Eros. And so in a couple of years, we're going to be looking at replacing him.
So we're a couple of years away from replacing?
Right. But I'm going to let his, his, his usefulness be the result of what these are. And as long as he continues to stay active and, and can continue to maintain certification and be as productive as he has, I'll continue to use him. When he's no longer productive and, and can't, can't produce like he's, like we expect him to, then I think at that time we'll look at, at his replacement.
It appears as though K-9's been very effective, so my thought is make sure that we start the new process prior to the old K-9.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I think our numbers should give us some indication as to when we should do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for chief? Thank you very much, chief. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work. All right, that brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, appointment of Kira Zimba to the Business Improvement Board for a three-year term.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the following name for you, for you to appointment to the Business Improvement Board on the February 5th, 2024 council meeting. Kira Zimba is the owner of Transcendent Salon and Med Spa located in downtown Columbus. In addition to her business, she also owns two homes within the Downtown Business Improvement District. Kira has been attending the BID meetings and is familiar with the board's vision for the future of downtown. She has a deep and heartfelt desire to help nurture, build, and grow our beautiful downtown district. Ms. Zimba is a farm girl at heart and extremely hard worker. She has a volunteer, she was a volunteer emergency medical technician for 10 years and has served as a foster parent and was blessed to be able to adopt her son. Her goal in life has always been to make our world a better place and to help our nation's children have a better future. She loves downtown Columbus, and she feels she can be an asset to the team. Council would entertain a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, Appointment of Cindy Vandenberg to the Senior Center Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Jill Owens.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the following name to you for appointment to the Senior Center Advisory Board on February 5, 2024, city council meeting per city council rules. Cindy Vandenberg is a longtime Columbus resident, having retired this past June from 47 years in banking as a teller supervisor. She and her husband Dick have owned Nebraska Cycling and Fitness in downtown Columbus for over 19 years. They have two grown sons. Cindy's community involvement includes 10 years with the Boy Scout Program, six years on the Board of Connect Columbus, over 10 years of helping with the United Way campaign, 10 years of being the co-chairman of the United Way Duck Run Teller Competition, and she assists with a couple of programs at her church. Cindy spends a great deal of time at the Senior Center and is one of the most reliable volunteers there. Council member, would we entertain a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, Appointment of Jorge Magdaleno as Police Sergeant.
Council members, again, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Jorge Magdaleno for appointment to the police sergeant position at the February 5, 2024 city council meeting. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of a police sergeant. The Civil Service Commission certified Mr. Magdaleno at their December 20, 23 Civil Service Commission meeting. Officer Jorge Magdaleno is a 12-year veteran of the police force. He was originally hired as a community service technician in 2011 and then as a police officer in 2012. He attended basic training at Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center and has additional duties within the department that include field training officer, drug recognition expert, and senior shift officer. He is a bilingual officer and has established trust within the community. Officer Magdaleno was the American Legion Police Officer of the Year in 2021 and the Optimist Officer of the Year in 2020. He is a recipient of both a Life Saving Award and the Award of Valor through the American Police Hall of Fame. He's a graduate of Columbus High and is 15 credits away from an associate's degree through Troy University. Officer Magdaleno is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. Council members, I would entertain a motion for this position.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we also have Officer Magdaleno in the audience. If he'd like to come forward as we are giving his approval, we would like to just thank him. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please signify by aye. Motion, we weren't trying to keep you in suspense, really.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Appreciate your, your appreciation. Semper Fi. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your service.
I want to say thank you, I stood before the council 12 years ago and thanked them for opportunity to serve the community as a police officer. And once again, I thank the council for all of this opportunity and I'm going to continue to serve the community as a police sergeant now.
Thank you very much.
Be safe out there.
Item 13D, Quote from Norfolk Truck Center and the amount of $12,551 for semi-truck emergency transmission replacement for the transfer station.
Mr. Mayor, move that the quote from Norfolk Truck Center for transmission replacement be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Norfolk Truck Center. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Councilman.
What would it add to the cost of the repairs if we put a new clutch in it while it's apart?
Oh, that's already, it's going to have a new clutch installed while it's apart. That's included.
It wasn't in the quote that it was.
Yes, no, that'll be included.
Okay, very good. It doesn't seem to make any sense not to put it in.
Absolutely, no.
For those of us who don't, for those of us who wouldn't know, I'll take your all words for that.
It's a big round test. Is it typical to blow out a transmission on a 20 freightliner? How many miles we got on this year? What's going on there?
This truck's got 200,000 miles on it. This type of service rig, government purchase, their warranty is one year, 100,000 miles. So we're getting into the fourth year with it, but it's really a rough service. The heavy loads, the soft ground and compaction, the transfer, or not the transfer station, the landfill, it is hard on these trucks. So, but this is not a typical breakdown, and we've had questions with them and we've had a discussion with them, but it's a mechanical failure and a breakdown, but it's out of warranty.
Just doesn't seem reasonable, but.
No, it doesn't.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, Quote from Downey Drilling Incorporated and the amount of $41,200 for inspection, cleaning, and repairs to well number four for water production.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Downey Drilling Incorporated for inspection, cleaning, and repairs be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Downey Drilling for inspection, cleaning, and repair. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13F, Comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Do we have any council members with comments this evening? I have nothing this evening. We'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, Resolution Number R24-11, Amending the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local Number 1575 to clarify the personal holiday pay rate.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R24-12 be adopted. That's my, I'm sorry. Yeah. I move that Resolution Number R24-11 be adopted.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R24-11. Any discussion? Looks to me like this is mainly clerical and cleaning things up to make sure there's no disagreements in the future. All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, Resolution Number R24-12, Awarding the Bid to Gearing Construction and Ready-Mix Company Incorporated and the amount of $805,385 for storm drainage and concrete improvement improvements 2024. This is CIP Number 20-71.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R24-12 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R24-12. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, Resolution Number R24-13, Approving the Memorandum of Agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation and Nebraska State Historical Preservation Office for installation of a bridge mitigation display structure in conjunction with the Columbus South Bridges Project Number SH-30-5131.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of Resolution Number R24-13.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R24-13. I would just, yeah, I would ask Rick to just give a brief explanation of, I know this has got to do with the bridge over the loop when it's time, but.
Right, so Nebraska Department of Transportation Project, and that's an historic, the South Brown Bridge, the Trust Bridge System is historic. And when they did their evaluation, them being the state did their evaluation, that it was not salvageable and needed to take it down, there's a requirement when you use federal money to have some sort of a mitigation for that historic structure that's going down. So this is a memorandum of understanding or agreement of what that would be. And we got a series of meetings, including went out to the public for some comments, and the state did, I should say, had a series of meetings, out to the public for some comments. And this is what came out of it. It was a display structure and panel that would be set up in the park, and that would meet the requirement of the Section 106 historic. So it basically would be a model of, a partial model of what it looked like or what it looks like now, but what it, you know, in the future, what it'll look like that people can always see along with some information about it.
And just the ETA of completion on it would be?
Well, a little unknown right now because the state is still gathering state and federal permits, and so it's still unknown whether that'll get bid this year or next year. And so whether construction would start in '25 or '26, but it would be at least a two-year construction period.
So like in the MOA, it has a five-year, within five years, it needs to be completed, though, right?
Yeah, they just make sure that that's up long enough so, you know, if things get drug out, obviously, the bridge is the main part if our stuff gets drug out. We would actually get it designed and built, and then they, the state would reimburse the city.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
How much is this going, I understand this isn't going to cost us anything, but how much is it going to cost to do this?
That's a good question. That was one of the things that was, the state didn't come up with, was a cost estimate for it. They pretty much, as a requirement, come up with what the options are to do this. And then, so then we have to go out for design and bid, so it's a little ways off for that. I'm sure it's going to be a little bit of money because we have to meet certain criteria on, you know, we can't use sticks to build it, you know, if you know what I mean. It's got to look like the replica of it, and the size of it's all in this memorandum of understanding of agreement on what it is. So I don't really have an answer for you at this point, but I'm sure there will be some dollars to it.
We're talking $100,000, $500,000?
Somewhere between there.
It's a good start.
Yeah, it's another government at its best. All right, we have. Any other questions?
I think with that comment, it's worth saying that the state led this project, and there was a do-nothing option that went to the public, and the public vocalized that they did want some mitigation to move forward. That's why the state's paying for this, but yes, we will have to get reimbursed for it.
Did the public know how much it's going to cost?
Doubtful, since they don't know how much it's going to cost.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, Resolution Number R24-14, Approving the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement with City of Skyler and Colfax County for the use of a shooting range.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R24-14 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R24-14. Any discussion? Chief, do you have, I mean, all right.
Chuck Shear, Police Chief, City of Columbus, Columbus Police Department. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Some of you might ask, why are you looking into the interlocal with Skyler when you already have ground out here at Loop? Well, part of that is that the Loop ground out here is unimproved, and it was really a temporary situation for us because we were an emergency situation, if you all remember what happened to our range. We lost the lease on the river out there, the Drummond property. And we were really in a tight fix to try to find something. Loop offered us a temporary solution, and it's worked out. We've been able to get out there and shoot. However, it's, since it's unimproved out there, it's a mud bath. And if we go out there after there's been a rain or any sort of a snow melt, I went out to qualify here in December, and I was in three inches of mud out there. It's just, it's an unimproved area that's, it's doable, but it's somewhat inconvenient, and it creates kind of a, kind of a challenge for our shooters and our instructors. The Skyler property is located on the east end of Skyler. For those of you that might be familiar with the community, it used to be an old landfill, and there is a corner of the property on the east side that they've converted into a shooting range, and it's an improved shooting range. They've got actually cement walkways and shooting paths. And so it's not going to be a mud bath like we've got out at Loop. And we paid, I think it was like $1,200 a year to go out to Drummond's, and our cost to go to Skyler is $700 a year. So we've cut our costs. And for the convenience that we have and the fact we don't have to fight the weather and some of the encumbrances that brings, I think it's going to be a good move for us. Some of you might ask, well, how are we going to get there? Well, we've got admin vehicles and school cars that we can get officers there, and we're going to tell them those vehicles are available. Should they choose to drive their own vehicle over there, it's a city policy that if we have a vehicle, we're not going to pay a mileage to drive over there. Okay, so it's not much further than it is to go where we are right now up on the Loop property north of town. So the Loop property north of town, as you, if you know where the Columbus Rifle Club is, we're about a mile and a half north of that yet on the unapproved road next to the canal. So this is that much further, and I think it's going to be a better situation for us. Captain Mulchick is our training officer, and he entered into a conversation with Chief Barber from Skyler, and between the two of them, they came up with the idea, or Chief Barber, I should say, from Skyler, and came up with the idea that we could enter into an interlocal with them. And so using their communities and their city attorney over there, and then having Neil look at it from our perspective, we're able to come to an agreeable resolution on using their property. We'll have access to us, access to it whenever we want to. They'll provide us a key or combinations, you know, that we might be able to get into their, into their gauge area. We just have to give them prior notice that we're going to be using it. So I think it's a win situation for us.
Will you continue to look for a locals spot?
I think we will, but right now, I guess I look at this.
You got a pretty good, pretty good deal.
If I were to come to you, the only thing we're going to be able to do in the future from a local spot is to purchase ground. And at $700 a year, it's kind of hard to beat that. So we'll continue to look, we'll keep those options open, but you know what the costs involved. I think right now, this is the better way to approach the training.
Weather permitting, would you continue to use the Loop site at all? I mean, so.
We will, if it's, if it's weather permitting and we can get to it, yeah. Yeah, we're not going to not use it. We're going to continue. It doesn't cost us anything to use the Loop.
Okay.
Where does the Flat County Sheriff operate? Where do they?
They're out at Loop right now. They're with us out at Loop.
They're out? Are they going to be a part of this deal with Skyler or?
I have no idea. I know that we entered into the agreement with Skyler. I don't know what they're doing. They may follow suit now that they know that we're over there. I don't know.
Thank you.
So we didn't coordinate with them?
No, 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 I'm just, and this sounds selfish, but I'm concerned about training my folks and making sure my folks meet the state criteria.
All right, any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item 15A, Ordinance Number 24-02, Amending City Code to Authorize the Selling or Distribution of Food, Drink, and Other Refreshments in Any Park Through a Special Event Permit.
Do you think somebody's got this?
No motion.
No motion? So nobody does have this? Okay.
First reading.
Shame on me.
Betsy, do you want to explain why this is coming forward?
Yes, previously, it would be approved by the park board, but there are certain situations. A perfect example would have been this past fall. SCOTUS had a couple of events all happening on the same day, so they were not able to have enough youth volunteers to run the concession stand at the stadium. So they asked us if a different vendor would be able to come in. That would have then had to have been approved by the park board for them to be able to have like a Judy's Concessions or something else come in to run the concession stand. This just gives us a little bit of flexibility for situations where the concession stand that is at the facility can't be operated and somebody wanted to bring in a different option. Just in a more timely manner.
It expedites the process. Item 15B, Ordinance Number 24-03, Amending Ordinance Number 10-38, Creating the Community Development Agency to Include the Mayor as a Member.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended. Ordinance Number 24-03 be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read Ordinance Number 24-03 by number only. Any discussion? It's awful glad that you're trying to include me. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. to include me. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two four dash zero three.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number two four dash zero three be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two four dash oh three.
Would your voting then be the same as it is in the council, only in the tie?
Yeah, it's, what it does is it lets me sign more than anything, because some of the times the paperwork doesn't get back into the, the city. Everything doesn't get finalized as quickly after a meeting sometimes on these things. And then it's easier if they can throw it on my desk and I can just get it signed. Is that not correct? I mean, it's more of a, a paperwork processing thing, but I thought it was nice that you just wanted to include me in the group.
I didn't have nothing to do with it.
Why, okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay, motion passes.
Item fifteen C, ordinance number two four dash zero four, amending city code by adding chapter one sixteen to impose an occupation tax on mechanical amusement devices and games of skill with betting capabilities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that this item be removed from the agenda as it is incomplete. Just in the past hours, significant redlining has been added to the item. I don't believe it's been reviewed significantly. As just in my perusal of the item, of the ordinance, there are several items in there that are not correct. I also am concerned about the costs associated with the item as well as the revenue generated from the item. As indicated in Tara's letter, we don't know what revenue is going to be generated, nor do we know what costs are going to be assumed in administering this program.
All right, yes, you absolutely have, have the right to ask for this to be pulled from the agenda, and we would need a second to do that. Without a second, we could have a discussion on what the ordinance is. I guess it's up to the council on their desire to, to hold off. And I guess if we were to hold.
This is the first reading as well.
This is the first reading too, but.
I know, I understand that.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to pull this from the agenda. Any further discussion on doing that?
I just agree with Mr. Roth in regards to, there's just some typos of, I think, the mounts, and it just needs to be reviewed and brought back for reading, the first reading.
It really doesn't speak to who's going to enforce it.
The city would enforce this. I'm, we can remove it. I do believe.
Community service, who, who would do that?
Yeah, the police department ultimately would if people, if an organization doesn't comply. I do have an email into the Nebraska Department of Revenue to see if they would share their list of who is registered within our jurisdiction. I have not gotten a favorable response from them, pretty guarded with some of their information. Then I could get an answer on the revenue generation. Many, many cities are moving towards an occupation tax on these devices because there's been a, a sharp uptick in the number of these devices in jurisdictions since the passage of the Games of Chance back in two thousand twenty, those three different voter-approved ballot questions. The fee in here is matching the state's fee. The city attorney did review the full ordinance today as well as I did and the city clerk did, and we've made some edits. That's why there's an edited copy in front of you. And I believe we addressed all of Mr. Ross's concerns in his email, but we can certainly bring it back for another first reading.
So just, just for clarification on the text, like, so it says, clarify for me, the mechanical amusement device, it says thirty dollars now, thirty-five dollars per machine.
It's thirty-five dollars per machine.
And the total is five hundred, correct?
Those are different devices.
Okay.
Mechanical amusement devices are things like jukeboxes, pool, that kind of thing. The games of skill with betting capabilities are those machines you see most of the time on like a countertop or a machine in a convenience store where you're betting money, playing a game, and have a chance to win money back.
So this, if, what you're proposing is it's thirty-five dollars per machine on pool-type elements, correct? Annual, annual. And then the other is two fifty?
Right.
So then.
And that matches, like I said, with the state's fee. The body of item I needs to get, needs to be amended.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting thrown off. Okay, thank you.
That's, that's part of my concern is that item I in there is incorrect.
It is.
And likewise, there's other grammatical errors in the.
I think we can just, I mean, there's a motion and a second. We could just table it as well and bring it back for a first reading next time.
Thank you.
Is that the comfort level, is to table it and clean it up? And if we do that, I would ask any council members, you know, Councilman Roth has expressed certain questions. Anybody else has questions, bring them up. So as we're doing that house cleaning and cleaning it up, those are getting addressed before we bring it back to us.
Just, I just want to bring a point up that during the, when the casino was brought in front of discussion and Gamblers Anonymous spoke against it, one of the things that they spoke to was, was these devices as being the most addictive devices that they are treating. And so it's, it's good, bad, or indifferent, it's here, but just realizing that they are people that are very addicted to these machines, and it may not be of, of what a value that we think we're going to, when we get back in twenty-five dollars, we may spend back in thousands of dollars in rehabbing people. So just keep that in mind and maybe that's.
Well, and I would, I would add to that, Councilman, that, you know, as was pointed out in the liquor license that was granted this evening, you know, come May, we're going to have a casino that we are going to be able to take advantage of the taxing and financing that's going to come from that entity. They are going to be taxed for the use of their machines. These machines need to also pay a price to be utilized in the community.
So Tara, question, and maybe it should be at a later point, but it seems pertinent. You mentioned taxing jukeboxes.
It's really a registration fee. It's not a tax on gross receipts. And if you, I can attach it for the next meeting, the Tax Act of Nebraska, it, it lays out all those things. So they're already registered with the state and pay a fee through the state in lieu of sales tax because they're exempt from sales tax.
Plus, they pay for the music industry because they have a tax, they get taxed by the music industry to have bands, to have a jukebox, to play music at a, at a establishment. And I guess my question was, is that something that could be eliminated from this? If, if so be? You know, I just find it hard that, here we, it's a minimal amount, thirty-five dollars, but yet it's still, it'd be like the third tax that they're paying on a jukebox. It doesn't generate a lot of money probably for them because it's rented. So how do you, how do you follow that if the establishment is renting it from a facility that provides a jukebox? Then we're taxing them, and they're not making much off of it already.
I would defer to legal on that because of the fact that we have to follow state statute to a certain degree. We can look into that.
Yeah, I would just say that's one of the questions to be looked at. Maybe this comes back cleaned up as, as something that's addressing games of skill. I, I mean, I'm just saying, I think that, you know, the question of, of taking this off until we can look back at other, other things, those are all.
Open for discussion.
And part of those discussions may be what legal tells us are, are options. Are we comfortable with where we are?
Yeah.
If you think of other questions or comments, please let me know.
So that would be a motion to table?
Yes.
To table and bring back something cleaned up and.
To remove it from the agenda.
Remove it from the agenda? All right. I have, I have a motion and a second to remove item fifteen C from the agenda. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Ordnances on their second reading. Item sixteen A, ordinance number two four dash oh one, adopting the recodified Columbus city code. The city code is on file in the clerk's office. No motion is necessary.
This is a second reading, no motion necessary. Just a question to the city clerk, since this is on file and it's the second reading. Has anybody come in and asked you about this item that's on file?
No, not yet.
Okay, just wondered. With that, it brings us up to the end of our meeting. Meeting adjourned.